Are there individuals and the media may also be audibly or visually recording this meeting. Madam Clerk, are there any changes to the agenda?
No, Mr. Chair, there are no changes.
May I have a motion to amend as presented, moved by Green, seconded by Partridge, all in favor?
Carried.
Any declarations of interest or hearing none? Approval of the minutes of the previous meeting. May I have a motion, moved by Skelly, seconded by Farr, all in favor?
Carried.
On consent items, we have item 5.1, the minutes of the senior advisory committee, moved by Green, seconded by Farr, all in favor? Carried. On 5.2, may I have a motion on Mohawk Ice Center, moved by Skelly, seconded by Partridge, all in favor?
Carried.
Carried. On presentations, we now have a presentation from John Ariel, manager of community initiatives, and Cindy Mutch, senior project manager of community special projects, respecting our future Hamilton. John, please come forward.
Good afternoon.
Welcome, John.
Thank you. Welcome, Cindy. Good afternoon, councillors. We're here to present an update on our future Hamilton, which is the 25-year community vision that was completed, approved by council in February of 2016. And the mandate that we've got from council is reporting back every year in terms of what the community partners and the city of Hamilton, what we're doing to bring that vision forward. And I will quickly go, just give you a little bit of background, how far we got here when it comes to that vision itself. We engaged with close to about 55,000 people between 2014 and 15. We were in every ward in Hamilton. We were talking to people at laundromats, at farmer's market, at community events. We went to close to over 80 community events that we went to. Website visitors, over 20,000 visited our website during that time. We had vision cards completed, close to about 7,000 from across Hamilton in different languages, as well as all the workshops that we did at that point. We also did open houses as well across municipal wards. What came out of these whole processes, what was approved by council in February of 2016, was a document that we now went ahead to engage more with the community, to have a completed document. What we have in front of you today is the final 25-year community vision. We've done more consultation, like I've said, to make sure we have a completed document that also has implementation plan as well. And community also brought forward over 200 community suggested actions that will also support that vision as well. When that was adopted, we, the vision, the new vision is updating, Vision 2020. We've got six community priorities that I will show you as well. 81 directions came out of it. We also have our 57 signs of success that was adopted by council in 2016. Here are the six key priorities that came forward. The priorities themselves, they have been used to update the city's strategy plan as well. And now, right now, we're working with different community partners to also talk to them about what they are also doing to implement that vision. And I'll turn that to Cindy Mutch, who is our senior project manager, leading this implementation work. Greg Iarussola is also there as well, working with Cindy on that. Greg is from McMaster University doing political science, and he's been supporting Cindy as well to engage with community partners and stakeholders to capture what they're doing to move that vision forward. So I'll turn it over to Cindy, who'll tell you since February of 2016, when that vision was approved, what we've been doing up to this point and what the next steps would be moving forward.
Thank you, John. Thanks so much. Sure, yeah, of course, yeah. Where's the clicky thing? Thank you. Oh, is it in your way? I think... Yeah, sure, great, of course, wonderful. Can I start? Okay, can I begin? Wonderful, thank you.
Cindy, the floor is yours.
Thank you so much. One of the most significant achievements for our future Hamilton was the adoption of the community vision's six key priority areas into the city of Hamilton's new 10-year strategic plan. Since council approval in February 2016, we've hosted a number of workshops collectively engaging over 500 participants to identify actions and realize our new 25-year community vision and create an implementation plan. Through these workshops, as well as other engagement strategies, such as our Spring 2016 Summit and our November Fall 27 Summit, we were able to formulate 226 community suggested actions. This is the document that was in your package, and these are the recommendations that we've received from our residents and our community partners for moving this vision forward. Through our targeted engagement efforts, we have also established our community implementation plan, which I'd like to share with you in just a couple of seconds. And in your packages, you will also find our recently completed Our Future Hamilton final report. And in here, you'll find information about our engagement strategies, the community vision priorities, as well as our implementation plan and our roles and responsibilities for moving the vision forward. Last but not least, very exciting news, we have the commitment of over 65 community partners to moving our visions.
It would have information, background, financial implications, legal implications, strategic vision, and then hopefully, community, our future Hamilton priorities as well.
Through you, Mr. Chair, the current template that we have in the report, I know there is a last speech on it that talks about how that particular report is aligning with cities' priorities. Those six priorities, they are directly from this document with addition of one, which is about our people and performance. And so when we report back as staff where those seven priorities that staff would now have to kind of provide information on how that particular subject matters is implementing that vision, is captured at the back of the report itself. If there's any more that we can do to make sure those are better aligned and articulated as staff, that is a good direction that we'll be looking into.
Sorry to belabor it, but just for clarity, because I'm kind of hearing two different things now. Embedded across all departments and very clearly aligned and branded as "Our Future Hamilton," so the residents who put time and attention in this project see that, see their value reflected in the work as a consideration versus necessarily embedded in the strategic plan, which is lost in corporate talk, right? Like the bureaucratic talk, people want to see, in my opinion, their input reflected in our decisions. So that's, that's just so that we're clear, I'll follow the rest up offline with yourself and Mr. Murray, if need be, just to kind of more expand on that possibility a little bit more.
Counselor Skelly.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and with your indulgence, just a quick comment and a note. A young woman who works in my office, Julia Colentino, was profiled in one of your newsletters, and I'm thrilled to say that you took the opportunity to meet her and to share her story. Over the course of the summer, Julie and I have been working on a program that I'm hoping council will support, we'll be bringing to council in the fall, and it's to have the city of Hamilton look at making hearing loops mandatory in public space throughout the city. It's a way of having people with hearing impairment, and Julia is an example of a young woman who suffers or has a hearing impairment. And so we know that it isn't just something that faces or something that elderly people have to deal with, but we will be bringing a proposal forward in the fall, and we've already had the support of your organization, and I really do appreciate it. She was featured in your last magazine and online newsletter, and I appreciate that, I appreciate the support, and it's just a heads up to council that we will be bringing this motion forward. With the support, by the way, it's even in the minutes of our seniors committee that they've met with her, and they are fully supportive of a hearing loop, such an initiative in the city of Hamilton.
Excellent, thank you, Counselor Skelly. Counselor Partridge.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, and John, Cindy, good presentation, and kudos to everyone who worked on this project. It was a very, very large undertaking and certainly time-intensive, but you know, there's a lot of good information here. So I have, I have two, one area of concern and a couple of areas of questions. And the first one, just to follow up on Counselor Green's comments with regards to the planning committee meeting yesterday, and you know, he indicated what we, one of the things that we had talked about, when, and what I heard you say was that some of these conversations are now starting. But my specific area of concern is where we have, and I'm going to use Water Down and Bin Brook as two examples, where we have massive growth happening in those communities. And in Water Down, more than 7,000 new housing units, more than 18,000 potentially new people coming into a community, and that dramatically changes a community. And my concern is that we, you know, we are allowing all this development to go forward, and are we, and here's my question to you, so in that kind of a scenario, are we now looking at this kind of a program? How do we integrate that into the development as it's happening as opposed to after the fact, then trying to go in and tweak? Because right now, you know, I, my sense is that we have different divisions that are working in isolation, and so we have all these homes being built, and then as the traffic starts getting bad and everybody concerns, it's like, oh geez, we have a traffic problem, we should probably look at doing infrastructure. It's been on the books for a long time, but it's not happening. How does this program fit into a new development? Because we have several of them throughout the city. I'm just using Bin Brook and Water Down as an example, but Stony Creek, Hamilton Mountain, East End, we have all kinds of them.
Through you, Mr. Chair, I think the overall, the, when we set out to do this project, it's all about what kind of future does the residents want to see? And so having captured all the aspirations and thoughts that they've got, that is informing, like I've said before, some of the strategy priorities that we're taking as a city. And by engaging staff, whoever is the project lead for those kind of projects, we're hoping that we'll have that robust conversation around some of those aspirations coming from residents. And so how do we now start to use this to inform some of those projects? At staff level, it's a conversation that will be, we're currently having right now and that we'll continue to have as well, to inform that kind of planning process before it's completed. And I would turn to, I don't know if, whether Suzanne has something to add to that?
Through the chair. I hear what you're saying, Counselor, that it's good to use these as a practice before we actually build things instead of going back retroactively and making changes to neighborhoods. We can certainly make a commitment to meet with our colleagues in planning and talk to them about ways that we can use the information that we've learned in our future Hamilton engagement process to perhaps change or tweak some of their processes in terms of how they permit and allow developments to be built. So we can certainly make that commitment to talk to planning, to see if there's any way that we can work with them around some of these, some of these practices for good community builds.
Suzanne, thank you for your answer. I guess my concern is, and you know, I'm fine with it being direction, but my concern is that the conversation takes place at the table and the end result is that, well, you know, I guess we'll just keep talking about it. And I'm not meaning that disparagingly for you or any other staff, but you know, these , this is important stuff. And honestly, we do a lousy job of working with new developments and ensuring that the community aspects, such as this program, which staff have spent months on and dollars, and what happens to it? You know, we go back to the older communities and work with the people and try and implement it. Meanwhile, we've got this new development going on where we had a perfect opportunity to really go in at the ground level and build that capacity into it. So I think it needs to forcefully be brought forward and, and, you know, be a dog with a bone, I'll be the dog with a bone, and just make sure that this conversation happens. Because I'm extremely frustrated and disappointed at, you know, how the opportunity is there for us to do a better job, and I'm not suggesting, when I say do a better job, I'm not suggesting staff here or even in other divisions, I'm just saying, corporately, thank you, we don't do a good job of it, and I think it's a disservice to our taxpayers. My second area that I'd just like to dig a little deeper on is with Ward 14 and Ward 15, and I'm looking at the Conversation Weekend event, and it's page 7 in, just let me share the Community Vision Final Report book. It talks about participants were engaged in a thought-provoking conversations featuring leading experts on the challenges and opportunities facing Hamilton today. And it lists, it lists the individuals involved. Dr. Paul Kershaw, Brock Dickinson, Trish Hennessy, Ron McCurley, Michael Finn, Dr. Kevin Smith, Gary Warner, Tim Potasek, Rebecca Wilson Sabo, and Spencer West. Was there any representation there for the rural community?
Through you, Mr. Chair, this was a workshop that was held, I think in September of 2015.
Right.
We had, I believe, over, I think, over 300 participants. I think that is the same weekend that Colonel Chris Hadfield came to Hamilton.
Okay.
The following Saturday. With over 300, we made sure that was representation geographically across Hamilton.
Okay, so that's good. So you feel there was good representation there, good cross-section of all areas of the city?
We do, through, Mr. Chair.
All right. And for Ward 14 and 15 initiatives that we're looking to do out there, can you give me any specifics, or is that still in the works?
Through you, Mr. Chair, we're, right now, what we've done is we've captured all the events that are happening across the city.
Right.
For every ward. There are some wards that it might be a presentation that we're making that ward, some will be attending an event. For example, myself, on behalf of the team, I was at the Rib Fest in Water Down this couple of weeks ago.
Yeah, it was great, wasn't it?
It was fabulous. And I made sure I had my blooming onion, so it was a very good day. So I think at the end is, we have all those, all these events that we've captured, our goal is to make sure we do have award representation, that we're going to every ward in Hamilton, that we've committed to, to make sure there's ongoing conversation with residents.
Yeah, and I really appreciated, you know, certainly having the presence of you folks at Rib Fest and, you know, the participation of the community in general. Those are my comments and questions, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Partridge. Counselor Jackson.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman, Cindy. John, thank you very much. Just want to say that when I first got elected, I thrilled at the opportunity of having town hall meetings in various parts of my ward. I guess it wasn't called, if you will, community engagement back then, but it was a form of inviting citizens to come out in case there were issues within the particular neighborhood and/or if there was a particular project, Mr. Chairman, that council was prepared to support pending citizen feedback. I loved hosting various types of town hall meetings in specific areas of the ward, and from those town hall meetings, most importantly, John and Cindy was encouraging and asking near the end of the meeting, for those that would like to volunteer, form a citizens committee, work in what I call a tri-party relationship between city staff, my office, and the citizens of the neighborhood, that would be the leaders and form the committee and work towards whatever the task force, whatever the project, whatever the program or issue was that would benefit overall that particular area. So the pieces and parts of, if you will, the East Mountain and the dozen or so actual neighborhoods made the overall East Mount community, I felt, even stronger. And so forgive me for just saying a little bit of self-aggrandizement there, but I just want to say for the record that the recent, the recent participation and the recent excitement over community engagement over the last five to 10 years, where it's been more officially pronounced through the Neighborhood Action Strategy in that department that Paul Johnson, if you will, officially launched about five, six years ago, and now has been led by Suzanne Brown, it's all part and parcel of the evolution of having more of our citizens engaged in the process and in the ultimate decision-making that occurs at City Hall, and I've always welcomed it. I've always, not everyone's going to be in agreement, there's been times when there's been disagreement, but at the end of the day, of consensus is always the ideal preferred scenario. But, Mr. Chairman, I just say all that to say, obviously, I support the continued thrust of what you're doing, and obviously with more staff involved that are now reaching out, the outreach is even greater across the city than maybe it was where it was piecemealed, if you will, in the past, depending on if that particular ward or area of the city had some kind of initiative that some of the leaders wanted to pursue. One of my bugbears, Mr. Chairman, between myself, you, and Counselor Green, I read here on page of the Community Suggestion Actions of 2017 under Community Partnerships, number nine, strengthening youth engagement and decision-making through the establishment of youth committees. So forgive me, John, ad nauseam, this won't be news to you, but at the beginning of this term, I said, okay, if you want to abolish the Hamilton Youth Advisory Committee, which Council Marula started 10 years ago and very cleverly handed off to me, in spite of the workload that we both had on our plates in our offices, I was happy to do it. And as we know, it has some upsides, downsides to it, a lot of transient with the students from high school, university, attendance was difficult, but I thought overall for those that participated, one or two, I believe, ran for public office, it was a, it was a great thing to put on their resume and give them first experience of municipal government potentially. So where does all this youth engagement and youth committees and all that structure and status stand? Mr. Chairman, through you, to whoever wants to take a stab at that, please.
And by the way, there is such a word as bugbear.
So, John.
Through you, Mr. Chair. I think I'll pass that on to Chris Hersneck.
Through you, Mr. Chair, to Counselor Jackson. Yes, we do have a draft report coming back to committee in September. We'd be more than glad to come over and give you an update in the near future on that youth engagement strategy.
Okay, Chris, well, that's encouraging, so I guess in collaboration with Neighborhood Action Strategies and whatever other departments, members of council, community groups, and obviously, most importantly, the youth, you're saying that you possibly have a new plan to unfold come the fall at this committee level, Mr. Chairman? Through you to Chris.
Through the chair, yes, we are going to come back with a strategy for that.
Okay, terrific, I'll eagerly look forward to that. Thank you, John and Cindy, thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Before I go on to second time speakers, just on that point, I'd like to give the chair over to Counselor Skelly. Through you, Madam Chair, now with respect to that youth component, there were two attempts. The first was about a decade ago to formally establish that liaison with youth locally. Noticing that we weren't truly grasping, I guess, a great deal of excitement surrounding the initiative, I brought it forward, another initiative with respect to using social media as a means of trying to bring on youth and engage them accordingly. Somehow, that's been lost and it's gone, I don't know where that ended up. Can someone just, through you, Madam Chair, explain to me what happened with that resolution of council?
Through the chair, I'm not familiar with that, but I could definitely, we could add that into our upcoming report to provide further consultation and/or address that.
Okay, because I think, as Counselor Jackson referred to, attendance was becoming, we couldn't get quarant, so obviously, that's problematic. But with, with means of communicating through conferencing, video conferencing and so on, we felt at that time with the council resolution that that was worth a stab at, and it's still something that I believe even more so today than when I originally brought it forward, that potentially there is some excitement along those lines. So when we could get an update accordingly, that would be greatly appreciated.
Through you, Mr. Chair, we'll investigate that, bring that back, and we'll set up a meeting as well with yourself to delve into it a little bit further.
Thank you, sir, and I'll take back the chair, and we have Counselor Green for a second time.
I appreciate the indulgence. A couple of things came to mind from some very apt questions. On the youth file, I would be remiss if I didn't just acknowledge Jesse Williamson's ongoing work informally throughout the community on the youth file. I'd love to see that formalized in some way and perhaps given some direction and some lead to just go ahead and be all systems go on that, because he's already doing great work, at least I can say, to my neighborhood and across some of our inner cities, but I think strategically, it would probably be, it would make sense if we actually had a, not off of somebody's desk, but had a defined role where that was what they were taking on. Mr. Chair, we've heard now about community outreach, we know that Counselor Jackson has actually been doing asset-based community development and neighborhood action strategies for decades before we even formalized it. But I'm actually equally, if not more, interested in how we're going to embed this in the culture of our corporation. So in here, there's lots of next steps for outreach. I talked about from an administrative standpoint, having it be in reports, but Counselor Partridge was quite right when she identified that the siloed approach, we can do it from this committee, but if this is not bought and bought into and sold across the corporation from every standpoint, from every division that we have, it's empty and meaningless. So the question is, we're doing outreach out into the community, what's happening internal to the corporation that's going to take these points that Counselor Partridge brought out in a very practical example with planning and with subdivisions and new developments, but everything? How are we getting this outreach into our workforce?
Vicki?
So through the chair, some really good questions. So the, Our Future Hamilton really focused on the community and their voice, and then based on that excellent input, it formed the direction of the six strategic plans for the corporation, so that's where there is alignment. So now a lot more work has been done, and that community group is evolving and growing and now is established over, you know, 200 suggested actions. So what we're doing now is regrouping through the CMO office to start rolling out, okay, what does this mean? We are absolutely committed to bring these two components together. So we're looking at, as Suzanne said, we're launching a sort of community engagement toolkit for employees that they could use out in the neighborhoods. But it is now putting these two pieces together, learn from what the community said, they are literally taking these same six strategic directions that we have and embedding them in their communities. And so then now when we drill down to the specifics, how is that going to work? So each one of the GMs has a lead role in one of those strategic directions.
Yep.
And so we would be responsible, then I'm responsible for culture and diversity, for example, so I need to understand what's happening within the various corporation as well as out in the community. So we will be coming back with the framework, we absolutely want to integrate these things together and make sure that it resonates. And when it gets to some of those difficult challenges that will occur from time to time, we need to know those scenarios and work them through, so...
That's helpful, that's very helpful, Mr. Chair. So as, you know, the director here in this department, you've been given latitude for diversity and culture across all departments to have feedback and influence and kind of, that's good to hear. I certainly look forward to the framework, because again, you know, to Counselor Partridge's point, you know, seeing the siloed approach and just knowing this is a culture conversation that we're having here, a way of doing business, a way of engagement, a way of respecting asset-based, like, community-led initiatives which are happening informally, politically and otherwise through our words, but I'd like to see it kind of seep into the culture of the corporation so that it just becomes who we are as a process and as a corporation. So great stuff, I'm satisfied by that, thank you for indulging me with the extra time, thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Green. We have no further speakers, so John, Cindy, many thanks for your presentation. So a motion to receive the presentation, moved by Green, seconded by Skelly, all in favor? Carried. Moving on. Yep, moving on, moved by Green, seconded by Skelly, all in favor?
Carried.
Carried. Okay, on 8.1, it's a report respecting skateboard park study, we have Counselor Jason Farr from the Farr side.
Thank you, I think this is just great stuff, and I have to commend the consultants, are they here? Chris, through you, Chair. Well, they did a good job anyway, I read out much of the report, not all of it, but, and certainly with, just on this, the 25th Annual Skate Jam taking place at Beasley Park just this past weekend with hundreds and hundreds of athletes appearing and competing and winning prizes and the great entertainment that is incorporated in this annual event where people come from all over, it's great timing. I can tell you, I haven't been there, I was visited, I took pictures, I tweeted, I talked to old-school Derek, who was there with myself and some friends at the first annual skate jam 25 years ago, that this is definitely embraced, community, athletic activity that keeps kids active and busy and useful and communitive and play a role in the vibrancy of those communities. And I've rarely had any complaints with regard to skateboarding in general, I can only remember one really, Mr. Chair, and that was from Kathy Drewett, who was the, at the time, the chair of the, or the executive director of the Downtown BIA, didn't like skateboarding on sidewalks. Otherwise, my interactions with skaters... Otherwise, my interactions with skaters and the, the sport itself is, is, has been nothing but positive. I think great stuff for communities. So I just have a few questions related to how we go forward in the budget process. What we have before us is an information report, what's required through you to, Chris, to get the, do we need direction to bring this to the 2018 budget process?
Mr. Hurstek.
Through the chair, I'm going to pass over to Cynthia Graham, who's the manager of Landscape Architectural Services, who also is in charge of the capital budget.
Welcome, Cynthia.
Hi, through the chair. In response to this report, as LAS has done in response to previous reports, including the outdoor facility study, we have taken a look at the study and put together a budget strategy to put forward as part of the 2018 budget. So it is my plan to put forward a budget sheet that looks at future costs for implementation of skateboard park features.
Any 10-year plan, through you, Mr. Chair?
Yes, we're showing several blocks of implementation 10 years out.
In the report, it says you found some efficiencies. Where did you find the efficiencies to, to squeeze this, what I assume is now appear, appearing here today and approved here today as a priority recreational use? Through you, Chair, where did we find those efficiencies?
I'm going to let, through the chair, I'm going to let the study author talk about that.
Okay.
Sorry. Through the chair, to the councillor. The efficiencies are through existing master plan processes that we can find efficiencies through. So if there's an existing asset that needs to be, for example, renovated, et cetera, if there are existing project efficiencies that we can evaluate a skateboard feature at that park, that's how we will align projects.
Right.
Taking advantage of existing contracts, et cetera.
Okay, through you, Chair. Cynthia, the Beasley, particularly, skateboard, historic Beasley Skateboard Park as part of Beasley Park, it's been around a long, long time. And I remember being a lifeguard or a soupy when it was a wading pool, a slash skateboard park when there wasn't water in it.
What year was that?
That was back in the 80s, Sam.
I think it.
Yeah, mid 80s. And, yeah, I don't know what was more fun, swimming in what was a three and a half-foot wading pool, three and a half-foot deep wading pool, more of a pool, or skateboarding in it back in the day. But it was, it was busy then, it's busy now. So, so that budget, we're redeveloping Beasley, the contract's out this summer, the project's out this summer. Just the skateboard park redevelopment alone, for that, what I assume is a community-level skateboard park, through you, Chair? Not a skateboard local, but a community-level park? Is that right?
Through the chair, to the councillor, that's correct.
What's the budget, through you, Chair, for Beasley?
Through the chair, our estimate at this point for the redevelopment of the skateboard park is around $500,000.
So this is a example, through you, Chair, of a.
Through the chair, to the councillor, Beasley has constraints which restricts the types of features and the type of scale that is physically able to be accommodated at that site. So, so unfortunately, due to those constraints, it's not able to have some of those higher level features that you would see at a park that has the space to accommodate. However, through consultation, those features that have been included as part of the improvements have been vetted through the Hamilton Skateboard Assembly, and they've been very much involved in what they will see through the redevelopment.
Yeah, HSA, they've been at it for, for a quarter of a century or more in the amenities and actually worked with people like Aldora back in the day and others in, in Little by Little Tennessee Propedo and adding amenities in a real grassroots way. So it's, it's awesome that we're actually formalizing it to the tune of a half a million dollars, giving them what they've helped give us for so long in amenities that they themselves created. Their input was remarkable in what we're about to embark upon here this summer. So as you can tell, I'm a big fan. I wish I could skate. I can't. I have enough hard, enough time on a bike. But it's very impressive. I think you'll agree, being an athlete yourself, Mr. Chair, it is undoubtedly a sport. The surveys, 91% were Hamiltonians and a good 35% were females. It's, it's really a great sport to see like almost an equal male, female participation rate, almost. It's more and more, you see female skateboarders, they're members of the Hamilton Skateboard Assembly Executive, and it's just a, a sport that crosses all diversities, all boundaries, and, and one that I actually enjoy even watching out my office window here at City Hall on the informal skate park that is the west grounds of our forecourt. And even when the security guy comes out and tries to chase him away, and 10 minutes later, they come back, and I'm highly entertained by the wonderful skill of these athletes and very much supportive of even greater presence of whether large or small skateboard facilities, recreation facilities, where the, there are really no operating costs across this great city of ours. I hope we become the skateboard capital. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and great work from our staff, really good report.
Thank you, councillor Farr. What about a hoverboard? Councillor Partridge.
Yes, thank you, thank you, Chair, and a good report. And I, I just, I don't have any questions, but I just wanted to comment, you know, recognizing that, that Water Down is one of the more successful skate parks. And, and I will tell you, in, in all the years that I've been sitting around this table, very, very few complaints. But since we have improved Memorial Park with the addition of the ice loop, with the splash pad, with the, the walking path especially, there's far more adults in the park now, which is making that skate park even more successful. You know, there's, there's young people of all ages that, we even have a little guy, Jack, he's just amazing. He's six years old and just absolutely dynamite. But they, they also have taken ownership of that park. And I think that's the big thing with young people, is for them to take ownership of that skate park. They clean up the garbage, they, they look after it, they hold each other accountable. There's still some that, you know, just, they will be not picking up garbage, that kind of thing. But the parents are there as well. It's a safer environment, the lighting is good, I think that's really key. But I also think another one of the success, the reasons that Water Down is successful is because of the location of that skate park. It is at the front of the park. It is right on the road, right on the sidewalk, easily visible. Everybody can see what's going on. And, you know, I think that's really critical to keeping not only those who use the skate park, the, the various age groups safe. The lighting is important, the parking lot's right there, and all the amenities are kind of built around it. But, you know, again, when, July 1st weekend now is part of Rib Fest, the young people there have a competition, a skateboard competition. They run it, they organize it. We meet with them a couple times a year in case they have questions. They get all the sponsors, they line up all the competitions, they do all the categories, they run it. And it's absolutely incredible where the skateboarders are coming from. We have them coming down from Berry, from, you know, all over the place. So I'm very encouraged to see this, and, and I think that it's, it's, you know, something that wasn't hugely important, not, or, or, you know, that people were supportive of a few years back, but now, the community, I think, is engaging this. And I'm, I'm very, very supportive, provided that they have those safety factors built in, that there's, you know, opportunity for adults to, to be involved. We have officers, police officers, and that's the other thing, they come out to Water Down all the time, they skateboard. They come out and they're part of organizing that skate jam on July 1st with, with the young people. And it's really something to see them actually drop down in the bowl. And, you know, there's a great deal of respect and, and relationship that's being built there. And I think that's key between the police and between our young people. So good work on that. Thank you very much.
Councillor Partridge, we now have councillor Jackson.
Thanks, Miss Chairman. Speaking of great locations, I can tell you that even though I wanted desperately the mountain skateboard park to be in Mohawk Sports Park, where we have, still have a little tube-type of skateboard facility, which is, which is functioning for that local area just fine for the number of participants that use it. But I wanted the larger one, long before councillor Scotty decided to run for municipal politics, I wanted it at Mohawk Sports Park. But we all decided, after lots of public consultation, to instead build it at what was to become a multi-use complex at Turner Park on Reymond Road. And speaking of location, and you'll appreciate this, councillor Green, we put the skateboard park right next door to the police station. And I believe of all the parks and playgrounds and skateboard parks across the city, to my office's record, Director Chris Hurstek, it's the only one after 14 years that doesn't have a little touch of graffiti on it still. So, you know, location meant a lot, the young people use it, it's well-used, it's in a multi-use park there. And I, I, as far as I was concerned, if I recall, it was about a half a million dollar project back 14 years ago. State-of-the-art at that time, I think it was modeled after a Scarborough project. But anyways, I would suggest, Mr. Chairman, that that's the kind of model you want to use. And this is a really, I want to commend Sarah, this is a really terrific document, moving forward now as a foundation of all the inventory you've captured here, Sarah. So congratulations. And, Miss Chairman, the director wanted to make a comment. Thank you.
Sure, Chris.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, great work on the staff on this pile, I can't commend them enough. And I, and I think to councillor Jackson's earlier point, the real success for this study was the, the engagement of the youth and the public consultation through the whole process. They really did provide a lot of input into this, and that's why we believe it will be very successful.
Thanks, Chris. And the other benefit, of course, with Turner, the young people told us back then, Miss Chairman, was public access and public transportation, public transit that was available along Upper Wentworth, even coming from the lower city, they could grab a bus pass, a bus ticket, get up there, spend several hours, and then head back home as well. Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, councillor Jackson. We have no further speakers. We have a motion. Farr, second by Green, all in favor?
Carry.
Carry. Moving on, we have eight point two, respecting Ham, whose voice was that? Farr, second by Partridge, all in favor? Carry. Eight point three, Scotty, Jackson, all in favor? Carry. Adjournment, Farr, Jackson, all in favor? Carry. Thanks, everybody.